Meeting of the Sanborn Regional School Board to order. All right, we will stand for the pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And now, Mr. Broderick. Mr. B.
When she calls me that, is she showing her age or showing my age?
I think I'm showing both of our age, not gonna lie.
Mr. B., they still call me Mr. B. every time we see kids at school.
Mr. B.
Yes.
So, we would like to thank you.
You're welcome.
For all the years you have put in, not only on the board, but also as a teacher.
Ah.
You are invaluable. I appreciate you. You've been a teacher since I was a student and while I've been on the board. And I just want to thank you so much for that. And we're really, really gonna miss you and expect phone calls.
So, as a little token.
More donuts, Pete. There's your bagel.
Don't let the door hit you on the way out.
She's not a student anymore. You did that today. Calling HR.
Mr. Broderick, you should open that.
I'm sorry?
You should open that.
Well, you know, I often wonder.
It's on my red line agenda.
You should open that, trust me.
Oh, so something else to lock.
I'm just saying you should open that, it's up to you.
Oh, did you have anything to do with this?
Nope, it's all Phyllis.
I was gonna say.
It's not ticking, so I wasn't sure.
Yeah, it's Phyllis, you're all set, there's actually stuff in there.
It's got a really tight spring in there.
He's gonna jump out at you.
He's nervous now.
We didn't dissect the frog, you know, so.
Dawn. It was cute and it was alive once.
You know, you people are politicians. I mean, you actually said nice things, how could that be possible?
Uh huh.
Oh, I got the wrong card.
I thought I said something pretty funny on that card, but we'll talk about it later.
Oh, paper, thank you, I always wanted this.
Lots of paper.
And a pen, or it should be a pen in there too.
Phyllis had a hand in this.
Oh, yes, she did.
Of course she did.
Phyllis had a hand in this.
So, I thought of it last second and Phyllis was like, oh, I already did that.
How do I know Phyllis had a hand in it?
Yeah.
My wife found a place where you can buy them by the pound, what are they, two-pound bags? So, I used to bring in four-pound bags, four pounds every once in a while.
When I first started working here, he'd have them in his pockets and his hand, the jar open.
See, since I've been doing construction, I don't have fingernails anymore.
Want some help?
You got your knife with you?
I was kind of wondering what he was doing before construction if he has fingernails.
I think I got it, Jamie.
Oh, he's got a pen, he's good.
Mr. B., my pen doesn't work. I know that, Dawn, that's why I brought a special one for you.
Right, I know.
Need an engineering degree.
No, I didn't, to be honest with you, it's okay, it's fine.
That's all right, he got it.
Six years, I spent five years of my life with this guy.
Yeah.
The first two were pretty tough.
That's a high percentage.
Exactly.
This will be very nice on the mantle, please.
Well, no, you're supposed to fill it with the little candles.
The candles.
When I put my candy in. So, that means that every month or so, you'll be sending me a new supply of candy?
Oh, yeah, yeah, Pete, okay, nice.
It's a starter package, Pete.
Thank you, Peter, thank you for everything you've done for us.
Thank you.
Thanks, Pete. Just remember, if it was good, it was me, if it was bad, I don't know what you're talking about.
Yep, yep.
All right, well, he packages that stuff back up. We will move on to action on the minutes.
Motion to approve.
All right, any discussion? All right, all in favor? Unanimous. Manifest documents, they've gone fully around, great.
I have one nomination, we did, we are very excited to nominate as an intervention future, she'll be joining us for the rest of the year. She's currently under contract, so I've worked with the superintendent, she'll be released later next month. Very thankful for that.
No resignations?
No resignations.
Move to accept the nomination.
Oh, that's right, thank you. You're welcome, second. Any discussion? All in favor? All right. Unanimous. Superintendent's report.
I am happy to say that we have two items on the agenda that really would cover my point, my report. One is the COVID update and the other is the calendars. Until then.
Okay. I think that might be our fastest one.
You told me to go quick.
I did. All right, we'll move on to committee reports. Policy.
Hi, so the policy committee met on 2/22. In attendance was myself, Ms. Dutton, Ms. Mahoney, and Superintendent Ambrose. Meeting called to order at 5:07. We approved the minutes from 1:52. We reviewed four policies, EEA video and audio surveillance on school property. We made one slight change, adding item D to permitting copyright requirements, and we approved to move it to the board. We reviewed ECAF, audio and video surveillance on school buses. There were no changes as it was connected to a previous policy, so we kept that back. And we moved that to the board for first read. The third was EEA, student transportation services. We discussed insured on an A for distance for school pickup. We talked just about, in the policy, it was a pretty long walking distance for the children, and that would be an issue especially for Bakey and Memorial. So, we recommended it would be changed to .5 miles versus the 1.5 miles. Superintendent Ambrose will be checking on the impact of that change. If there was no issues, it will be moved at our next meeting. The last policy we reviewed was JLCF, which is the wellness. This was a policy that I recommend bringing to the committee due to our wellness committee focusing on staff retention and staff health, whereas the wellness policy really only focused on nutrition. So, we are looking to work with the guidance department on really creating a more robust wellness policy. And we will be talking about that at our next meeting, which is tentatively scheduled for April 6, 2022.
All right, excellence in student achievement.
Excellence in Student Achievement Committee met earlier this evening. It's, I'm gonna try to report on that. In attendance, Mr. Fitzpatrick, Ms. Dutton, Mr. Ambrose, Ms. DeRozier, Mr. McCluskey, Mr. Stack, Ms. Donnell, Dr. Kennett, Dr. Haines, Mr. Malilla. We had two members of the public, Kristen Elaine from Kingston and Annie Collier from Newton. It was, we, this was a meeting where we were discussing grading practices, and it was actually it was kind of a two-hour focus group almost. So, there's not a lot to report specifically. We broke into groups, three groups, and discussed a lot of sort of what we value in terms of grading, and it's actually hard to boil it all down. But we are going to be looking at conducting some surveys and ways to engage the staff and the teachers to get their feedback as our next steps going forward. Our next meeting is up in the air at the moment. Tentatively, I think we're looking at possibly March 23 because of, because March is when, you know, the elections happen and committees are usually reformulated. We'll sort of firm that date up once we know for sure.
Yeah, I just.
Please, you know, anyone that wants to add, oh, there was just a lot. It was kind of a raw data gathering meeting, so there's not a lot to report, I don't think, but feel free to chime in.
Well, you guys go ahead.
The only thing I was gonna add is when we're trying to collect information and input, we're not only going to be surveying staff and teachers, we're also going to be, sorry, we're also going to be reaching out to families and also the students. We want their input as well, because it's really important. We, those are the three big pieces to this puzzle. So, we have to hear from everybody to really hopefully make something that everyone understands, and it really helps to engage and motivate our students, so.
That's what I was going to add, thank you.
There you go, beat you to the punch.
And shorter.
Even better. All right, Jamie, did you want to add anything?
No, not for that.
Okay, all right, so then we'll move on to finance.
The finance committee will meet on Wednesday, the 23rd of February at 3:30.
Great.
In replacement of what would have been our normal meeting this week.
Thank you.
Great.
Facilities.
Facilities committee met on Wednesday, February 2. The meeting was called to order at 3:30 PM. The meeting was held at the library at the Bakey School. And attending were Jamie Fitzpatrick, Jim Baker, business administrator Matt Angel, and safety and facilities manager Dan Doyle. The committee reviewed the minutes of December 1 meeting and voted to include the SAU 17 video link to this and future facilities committee meeting minutes. The committee then approved the minutes. Matt Angel gave his business administrators' report. Mr. Angel reported that there's a leak at Bakey in the roof. Failed rubber membrane is being replaced. Also, he and Mr. Doyle are investigating repairing or replacing failed insulation around the rooftop HVAC duct. The third proposal for repairs needed to the sewer line is being worked on. They're looking at replacing six circulator pumps in a separate zone from the new boilers at Bakey. Some of these are 30 years old. They're looking at an air conditioning unit for the library and evaluating options. The electrical system is being assessed to determine if the building can support window AC units. The loading dock needs repairs and also the stairs to it. At Memorial, three heat pumps were replaced last month. A floor and one of the modular units has been repaired. The roof-mounted cables that anchor the boiler smoke stack against high wind need replacing. And at the high school, proposals are being sought to address leaking windows in the second-floor greenhouse. That's the bumpout attached to the science room. Roof and siding issue at the high schools are being evaluated. And also, a retaining wall at the high school needs repairs. The committee reviewed a proposal to install a mosaic mural on the exterior brick wall in a corner building by the art room. And the committee was shown an example of the mural based on one at a school in Portland, Maine. After lengthy discussion, the committee decided not to approve the mural on the building exterior. There were discussions about ongoing maintenance, its impact on building architecture, plus community aesthetics. It was suggested a location on an interior wall would be a far better option. Mr. Angel discussed a request for proposal that would be used to qualify an electrical engineering firm to work with the district on related projects to proceed similarly to last year's selection of an architect. The meeting was adjourned at approximately 4:12 PM. The committee then toured the Bakey facility. We visited several areas of concern, steel railings on a hall airway that needed additional height, electrical boxes, missing a latch or that had rust on some connections, and one with old-style fuses. We reviewed the six circulator pumps we discussed in the meeting and two aging walk-in freezer units and an aging compressor. We looked at a subsurface wall at the library with moisture issues and exterior seals on a roof where it meets an exterior wall and the loading dock and the exterior stairs that we discussed earlier, plus another set of stairs around the corner from that area. The next meeting of the facilities committee will be scheduled after the March elections. And please consult the school district website, sau17.net for access and location details. Thank you.
Thank you. Public relations.
Public relations has a meeting scheduled for April 6.
All right, so personnel. So, personnel, we met on January 19. We reviewed and accepted the job descriptions for reading specialist, math specialist, intervention teacher, director of teaching and learning, and director of academic intervention, assessment, and accountability. What a mouthful. And then, we also met again today at 3 o'clock. There were two other job descriptions that we reviewed and accepted, director of technology and director of student services. And then, after that, we had a discussion about teacher evaluations, the Marshall evaluations that are being used that were implemented back in 2018. So, it was a great start to the conversation, and we're gonna continue at the next meeting, which will be updated when we set the schedule.
It'll be in April, yeah.
It'll be April, hopefully not my birthday.
Thanks for adding that, by the way.
Welcome. Okay, on to SST.
They have not met.
Budget.
Yep, the budget committee have a deliberative session last week, and voting is on March 8 from 8 to 8 at both the Newton Town Hall and the Swayze Gym. And that concludes the budget season.
Thank you.
It's the Newton Fire Station.
Oh, it's the Newton Fire Station?
It is at the Newton Fire Station. Thank you, yeah. They changed it, but we keep trying to remember that, so.
Okay.
Is that right, Phyllis, the Newton Fire Station?
Yes.
Thank you.
Correct.
Yeah, yeah.
Safety complexes, are correct, yes.
Oh, thank you, thank you.
All right, wellness.
We are actually meeting, I thought we were meeting today, but we're meeting actually on Tuesday at 3:30.
Great.
Great, thank you. Student council representative report. And Jocelyn, I do know there is a basketball game going on if I'm, no?
Oh, okay, you're okay, okay.
I just wanted to make sure, if you want to go?
No, it's not our school, I might go after to help out.
Okay.
Okay.
Not worried.
Okay.
So, we have a few more things than last month. Ms. Ally and her career pathways program, along with SOBROCK and the Public Health Network, sponsored a trade expo at our school. Students from grade seven to 12, including Ellis, which is Fremont, had the opportunity to learn more about different career paths, and there were 40 vendors. So, it was a great success, there were a lot of people that got to learn about all of the different trades. And we also, she's also working on a program that the state is giving people free LNA courses and scrubs and stuff like that, so they'll be earning an industry credential for free with this state program, which is an awesome program that she's been able to get. I think we have six or seven kids that are doing it, so it's awesome, they're all gonna be able to have jobs in the LNA, so then they can later on go and do more with it. Ms. Mulvey and her biology class were able to do their first lab because she's teaching her sophomores. And they kind of had a break because freshman year, there weren't a lot of in-person labs because of, some people are online and some people were in person, and in eighth grade, there weren't like labs that you could set up. So, she was like, I'm gonna give you what you are supposed to figure out, and you're gonna do a lab on this to find enzymes. And they were able to like create their own research project and learn about enzymes, which is really cool, because she gave them a freedom of choice and also gave them the ability to learn how to do a lab and how to set it up. The kitchen aids that were donated by the Paris family got their first use this week. The seventh, eighth, and eighth-grade consumer wellness classes made Valentine's Day sugar cookies. And the high school's nutrition classes are making ice cream. So, they're very thankful and very appreciative of all of that. NHS made Valentines for the elderly. And our student council and a few other students were able to make Valentines individually for all of our elementary school kids, grades pre-K through six, which was super awesome. We were able to give them, to all of them and kind of see their faces, because we were trying to spread a little bit of happiness throughout the season. Our student council has a New Hampshire Association of Student Council meeting next week. It's a nice workshop that we're all able to go to. We have spring carnival in April and so the next week, because just out of COVID precautions, we're just pushing it back a little bit, which is good, means that it's gonna be safer, we'll be able to have a little bit more regularity. Ms. Petrucci and her trouts, she is planning to release them in the next few weeks. She grew trouts from eggs too, hoping to release them and then make bigger fishes. And she also has her bees, and we wrap them up for the winter, so hopefully they make it through this winter. And the tree with wire by Brian is getting worked on, it should be finished by the end of the year. And that's all for this week.
Jocelyn, if you know when the bee unwrapping happens, can you let me know? I love to go to that, it's really fun.
Yeah, okay, I'll let you know. And I want to say thank you, because my daughter was one of the kids that came home, and I actually think it was your name that was on her Valentine candy, so it was really cute. I was like, you know who that is? And she was like, oh! So, it was, it was special, but she, that was like one that she pulled out and showed me. So, I'm really grateful that you guys did that, because it really did mean something to the kids.
Thank you.
It was great, so thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
And thank you to the Paris family, because I also had Valentine cookies come home to my house, because my daughter's in consumer wellness, so do thumbs up there.
All right, we will move on to first public comment.
Jen Lampron, New Hampshire. I just wanted to say thank you. Mr. Ambrose has seen a couple emails from me this week, and I appreciated the email that went out today with regard to the half-days being changed to once a month. Just given all the changes in the high school and the focus on more, on providing more focused learning time on subjects, I'm just pleased to see that we're keeping more learning time on the calendar, because to me, that's priority. We're changing the schedule at the high school from eight classes to six classes, so seeing that we're not, you know, losing more learning time, to me, is important. Anyway, thank you.
This is super intimidating. Elizabeth Lanville, Kingston resident. So, before I found out that some of the things may be changed, I just have some thoughts on the initial, like, one hour of early dismissal every Wednesday. So, I was coming up here to speak on behalf of myself and other working families of Kingston and Newton. We were opposed to the new proposal of changing the half-days for the five-day week. I'd like to begin by telling you that my household and many other households have two parents that need to work. And so, your proposal to make the school day shorter is not feasible for the work, for most working parents. Most of us have daycare providers, and by adding the new school hours would increase what we currently pay for daycare or cause some to have to look for other daycare if they're not accommodating for extra time. I'm also a teacher in Massachusetts, so I understand that sometimes schools need half-days for PD. We have PDs every other Thursday. But I was just wondering about PDs, are teachers just strictly doing professional development? Or are there times that they're able to collaborate as a team or have time to prep and not just constantly in meetings? Because I know the teacher burnout rate is ridiculous right now, and it is greatly appreciated to have that time to work with other staff and do other things just than, just, other than just sitting in PDs for the entire afternoon. Are the teachers requesting this? I was wondering where that was coming from. These are the questions we parents are asking ourselves, or these are the questions we parents ask ourselves when you decide how our children's education will change. You need to consider what this will do to some of the working families that can't be accommodating for that extra time. And I'm hoping that this change won't, to not make the change, Kingston and Newton will not chase away young working families. Let me rephrase that. Do not make Kingston and Newton the type of town that will chase young families away by making decisions that are no longer sustainable for the working parent. And I also have been made aware of some statistics from other towns, and I can share with, share that with you later in an email of just different towns' early release schedule, not just Sanborn. Thank you.
See, it wasn't that bad, you did a great job. Yeah, yeah, don't be scared, we're, we're.
It's only scary the first time, it gets easier every time you stand up after.
Anyone else?
All right. Can I, I'm not sure what the audience is here for. Is there something that, in the past, we've had a conversation of going to something that might be a hot-button issue, and then, then we have public comment after? Is that? I don't, I'm not sure.
I know.
I just, I only raise it because we've done it before, I don't know if that's necessary tonight or not, just asking.
We usually do that when we have a large group of people that we know we're gonna speak about one topic.
And so, for anyone in the audience that maybe thinks that we're going to do that if we're not, maybe.
Thank you, more.
They should know that we won't be speaking until, they can't speak until after.
Thank you, yes, if anyone would like to speak about anything else on the agenda prior to the board voting, this is the public comment to do that. So, if you're here for the COVID plan update, now's the time. If you're here for the, if you're here for the other items, now would be the time. And then, there'll be a second public comment after.
You're gonna, there are two public comments, we never know what the public's gonna do. And it's gonna fall on the chair, and it's a tough thing to do to say. And I was almost trying to say rule of order, I'm not gonna interrupt the people, but, you know, it's up to the chair to say, you can't speak about that now, that's a tough thing to be in. Because you don't know what they're gonna say, but there was a second comment. You're absolutely right.
I'm just saying that in the past, we've moved it, we've moved it up before a vote, that's, that's all. So, if anybody in the audience is thinking that, if we're not gonna do that, I think that they should know.
You're kind of reading the mind of what they're gonna talk about, and that's, that's, and that's a tough spot for you to be in.
I guess the question is, if anyone would like to have any comment about anything that we are going to be discussing, come up and give us your public comments, so we can hear your voices.
Except for him.
Not everybody wants to hear mine. Everyone looks at me during every public comment, and they're shocked when I don't talk. So, Chris Bashak, Kingston, New Hampshire. I know there's gonna be some discussion on the COVID policy. I'm really hoping that the board is maybe considering going to full-mass choice for parents and students. I know myself as a parent, we're watching stuff in even the most restrictive states and areas around the country. They have even loosened up their restriction, they've abandoned mask mandates. You know, everyone's come to fruition to the point of that we need to learn to live with this. And, you know, after watching over 70,000 people in the Super Bowl, including some of the most hypocritical people I've seen in my life, not wearing a mask and realizing that nobody's really in danger. The only people I saw at the Super Bowl wearing a mask was the Children's Symphony. But meanwhile, the adults were unmasked for the entire event from what I could see, regardless of the rules that were placed. So, I think we're at a point, they've even acknowledged, some folks are beginning to acknowledge one-way masking benefits. So, anyone over the age of five has had the opportunity to receive any numerous amount of vaccines that they wish to protect themselves, as well as encourage anyone who wishes to have them or their children continue to mask. And I'd just be one less stressor in our lives that our kids aren't worrying about, and we just need to move on. So, I hope if the board takes any consideration of that, they'll consider going to fully mask optional, and let's get this behind us, thank you.
Melissa Pearson, Kingston. I also had a question about the masking policy, not necessarily a question, but in regards to the busing and why the students are continued to have to wear masks on the buses when they don't have to wear them in the classroom. And this includes going to sporting events when the bus ride is upwards of an hour and a half. So, I think that that is definitely something that can be looked at. And one of the things that I heard was that it's a public transportation system, which is confusing to me, because I thought, my impression was that it was a private company that our school employs. So, please consider letting the students choose to wear a mask on their buses. That's all I have to say.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Technically, you're supposed to have one shot for three minutes, but you're a newbie and we're gonna give you a break, how's that? We just want you to feel comfortable.
See, second time's not so bad.
Yeah, yeah. Oh, thanks, who said that, Stack?
Comfortable.
Elizabeth Lanville, Kingston, New Hampshire resident. On COVID, I know I said I work in Massachusetts. Elizabeth Lanville, Kingston, New Hampshire resident. On COVID, I know I said I work in Massachusetts, so February 28th. Our students are going back, no mask, parent choice, like you do you. I agree with everything that they both said. Also busing, I would hope that maybe something with busing could change so that they don't have to wear their mask on the bus. But obviously if it's a parent choice, it's a parent choice. And I feel like everybody should have the option. If you're not comfortable with your kid not wearing a mask, have them wear a mask. And if you don't want them to wear a mask, they shouldn't have to wear a mask. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. New business. Graduation. Mr. Stack, would you like to take that away?
I wasn't ready. I thought public comment was gonna be longer.
It can only be so long when you have so many people in three minutes each.
Brian Stack, Plastow, New Hampshire. No, just kidding. Graduation. So we're getting ready for graduation. Hopefully, this is typically the meeting you guys set. Graduation. I feel incredibly comfortable regardless of what the weather delays might bring us, that we can pull off a June 10th graduation and still be well within our instructional minute minimum limits. Normally, we do the first Friday in June, but because the first Friday is so early, we're actually doing the second. That's why I can say that. What you're looking at here is just a draft still not finalized of some of the events that we're looking at for the year for our seniors. We'll be advertising this probably shortly after February break. Just trying to iron out a couple more pieces with this. Obviously, we put a disclaimer that we're going to follow whatever COVID practices are in place when we're running events at the time, but I really don't anticipate too many modifications that we need to make. Been working with the senior class. Senior class has already taken a look at this. They feel really good about it. We had a really good discussion about a lot of different things on this. They're continuing to give me feedback on some of the things that they like. Very interesting. We talk about all the things that we lost with COVID. But we don't talk a lot about the things that we gained. And there are definitely things that we gained with COVID. For example, they love the car parade. They never want the car parade to go away. We will keep the car parade. They loved the fact. So then then other things develop, right? Last year, we did ticketed seats assigned by family randomly assigned. I said, I really don't want to do that. And they said, Mr. Stack, if we're all doing a car parade, you kind of have to. Otherwise, we're never going to be able to get people in because everyone's going to be fighting over seats. True. So I guess we get to keep that too, you know? We're looking at different, different options for baccalaureate, working with the church there. And they've got some new ideas that they'd like to entertain that they think will be a good change. I mean, I don't know what questions you might have at this point. I have a couple of surprises that I don't really want to say publicly yet for graduation night, but what I will tell you is that depending on how these surprises play out, that will ultimately determine where we hold graduation. So the kids know this because they're helping me plan some of this, but yeah. And we're working on a rain plan because the rain plan I can't help with, although actually the kids, we had a good talk about a rain plan that would still allow us to accommodate a large number of people indoors in a creative way. So I guess what I really need tonight is a guarantee on a graduation date so we can get the rest of this moving.
Can I have a paper, please?
Oh, did, yeah. Oh, my goodness.
I just, no, it's my fault because I just left a stack. I didn't count them up.
Isn't your name Stack?
I'd just like to see that it's going back to some normalcy.
Yeah. So do we.
I had a question. I mean, I had a question just when you say you're not sure where you're gonna have it. You don't know if you're gonna have it out here on the lawn or on the football.
Correct. So I
Surprise.
Exactly. So I think right now it's slated for the football field. And that's probably where it will be. I gotta confirm, there's a couple of surprises that could impact that. So unless I tell you the surprise, I, yeah. It'll leave it at that.
You know, we want to know now, right?
Sorry. Gotta ask the kids. The kids, most of the kids.
Email us. It's fine.
That's true. That's true.
I mean, I'm also gonna comment that because I, just every year, I just am so sad, but this year I'm so happy. That it looks like this is much more normal, pretty much very normal.
Very normal.
And I encourage everyone to come and I encourage everyone to come to the baccalaureate because that's a beautiful ceremony as well. And so yay, thumbs up.
It is quite normal. That's, that's, I think, the best part. I mean, granted, we don't know. If we decide that it has, something has to be mask required because that's where our plan's at and that's where we're at and that's fine. But I think at this point, everybody understands that everything's a variable. We have a plan to dictate that. We don't need to create separate plans for special events. We're just trying to keep, because that's, that is the new normal, right? That's where we're gonna be at. So it's good.
Any other questions for Brian?
Brian needs a motion to it.
I know. I figured I'd ask.
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm sorry. I thought we were just
So if there are no
Jamie raised his hand. Were you making the motion?
Okay, then.
I move to accept June 10th as the official graduation.
You can figure it out.
Peter Jim or Tammy. Flip a coin.
It's a jammy.
Any further discussion?
Could I just add subject to change? I hate to be the bearer of, it's still only February. And we've had some hellacious snowstorms that could technically, I don't see them in a long-term forecast, but I think, you know, always keep your options open. So it might friendly tentatively are
I think Brian said
So we would, we would have to have, I think, 10.
That many?
Yeah, because right now, well, you can pull up the instructional minutes calculator. I believe we're five days over the instructional minutes now and seniors are allowed to go five days less. So we, yeah, we got plenty of wiggle room.
We go by minutes.
Yeah, yeah. Well, no, yeah, that's by minutes though. We, yeah. So I think we're really good. I mean, yes, everything is always, we can't break a law. So let's put it this way. If we get to that point, we I would come back to you and say, we gotta change the date because we're not gonna be in compliance with
But I remember coming to school on Saturdays.
Yeah. Yep. Yeah, we have 10 days wiggle room as of, as of today.
Is Pete making a motion to hold Saturday classes?
No.
You know, it happens. I won't say what happens, but it
It's gonna be Pete in the gym with all the seniors by himself.
This is his farewell motion.
I was gonna read some of his last summit of evaluation if you wanted. From 2007. I will tell you, when I first met this guy, I kid you not, I go up to his classroom and he's like, first of all, he's incredibly good with especially the hardest to reach kids. I will always remember that about you. And then he made a joke one day about having skeletons in his closet and no word of lie. He pulls out a skeleton from his closet in the classroom. But he did. He had a great way of reaching the hardest to reach kids, Pete. So thank you for all your service. It's pretty fantastic over the years.
All right. If there are no other, there's no other discussion, we'll take a vote. All in favor? All right, unanimous.
All right.
Thank you, Brian. All right. Now on to the fun approval of the academic calendar, 22, 23. Tom and Patty.
Thanks. Patty, would you like to just give an overview of what, what kind of our process has been and I'll chime in too?
Hi. So we've had a few, I think we're on the third version of the proposed academic calendar. The first edit that was made was made to put us in alignment with what SST has. And so we really changed up some of the days off and that really put us in alignment better with what SST has because we've got concerns as far as busing goes. We had had a calendar previous to the one that the board received early this morning that had early release Wednesdays, every Wednesday, that we would have students dismissed one hour early, which would give us an hour every Wednesday, which would give teachers and administrators time to not only meet for professional development, but also to meet in professional learning communities, to prepare lessons, discuss student academic achievement data and things like that. We had heard some comments from the public about the concerns with the childcare and also with the amount of instructional time that was being impacted. And so the version that you received this morning more closely resembles the calendars that we had back before COVID happened, where we had one early release Wednesday a month. Except for the two months that we had the full professional development days. This calendar is a little bit different in that this gives us one a month, which would be a two-hour early release, which gives us, we think it's a compromise as far as addressing the concerns of the families, but also helping us to increase the amount of time we have our teachers working on some of the things that are coming up next year, which would include things like NEASC reaccreditation, further professional learning with new math programs that are, that were adopted this past year for the elementary. They're still getting under the belt. For next year, the secondary level and any of the requirements that we would have going forward for what would be in the strategic plan for the work that we'd be doing. So there were a lot of different versions and a lot of different options. And Tom, I don't know if there's anything else you wanted to cover or it's just, there were just a lot of different components to this and we're trying to find, you know, the Goldilocks, everything's, you know, good for everybody in the middle, but I'm not sure how close we're getting with any of these.
Yeah, I'll just comment and say that, that, you know, it's very clear that the way we did this this year isn't working for families. That's never been, we discussed that as an administration, that the feedback was very clear that having a two-hour early release on a five-day week was too disjointed in the sense that parents couldn't remember which week are we on? Are we having an early release this week? Are we not having an early release? What's happening? So we made the proposal to do one hour every Wednesday because it's consistent and it's less time. We received some feedback, you know, 10, 14 people emailing, which statistically isn't significant, but it's clear that people were very unhappy with the early release days. And I just want to be clear with everyone so that they understand that although this isn't normal in our area, this is a very normal practice in public schools at this point that are excellent schools. Excellent schools have to have time for teachers to meet and collaborate. That's a fact. We cannot move the district forward, align the curriculum, align our assessments, improve our grading and communication without teachers having time to talk. So we can do that one of three ways. You can either give them some early release time regularly. You can have more specialist teachers and have the teachers take the students, the art, music, PE, guidance, library, technology, they take the kids while the teachers meet during the day. Or you pay teachers to work outside of school. Those are the three choices. So if we, if we go forward with this calendar, Patty and I may have to work with some of our professional development funds to pay teachers to work outside of the school day. We can, we can find ways to do things. This is, this is probably our second best choice. As an administration, our choice was the one-hour early releases on Wednesdays. We felt like that was a fair compromise. We can accept this calendar and we put it forward and we're putting it forward with a real recommendation. We support it and we can live with it. We're going to have to be more creative to do it. One other option that has been discussed is, well, if we have, if we go by the hour model, could we add a couple of professional development days into the calendar to offset the loss of time and to have time for people to collaborate? And the answer, I did speak to our attorney today about that, just because I was wondering about the contract implications. And he did say that we would have to sit down and negotiate with the teachers, but there is a possibility that we could, we could take a couple, we have essentially, I think Patty's at five days built into the
We have five days that are built in. We generally, and so for this calendar, what we did for the coming year because of all of the increasing state mandates on training that we had, especially this year with child abuse prevention, suicide prevention, there's just, there was nine hours worth. So what we did was we added an additional day at the beginning for teachers to have professional development. So that puts three at the beginning of the year instead of the regular two. Then we have two in the middle of the year. So we've got one in October, one in March. So now that brings us to five, which gives us like a day after the last day with kids for teachers to do everything else to close up the year and be out of the door. So that, that soaks up our days.
And how many, how many days do we have built into the number of instructional hours that we have before we have to start adding days to the end of the year? So our snow day built in, so to speak.
It's, it's about five. I think I was just looking at, I think it's about five. So we build a buffer of about five days. That's, that's just general practice. As you look at a five-day buffer, we're going beyond five days. We've got to think a little bit. Yeah.
So what, one thing that we did was we, we, we looked at the number, because we go on an instructional hours model. We have to meet a certain number of hours before the end of the year for each level, right? And so what, one thing that we could explore if we need some more time for professional development is could we, could we start, could we take a couple of days of hours and have professional development on those days? But then if we have a snow day, we have to add that day to the end of the year to meet our number of days. So Brian just referenced, seniors get an additional five days before it bumps them. So they get actually 10 more days. So they're in good shape. Right now, even with the four days that we've already had, I think that that what I'm recommending to the board at this point is, I think that this, this model is probably where we should go. We have a couple of options. One is to adopt the calendar that we proposed with the early release Wednesdays on the first Wednesday for two hours. The one that's in front of you right now that we sent out this morning. The second option is to just hold off on the vote and get some more information. Have the principals talk with teachers and poll teachers. We've not done that as part of this process and that might be worth doing to get feedback from our staff because collaboration with staff is super important. And frankly, I think it's an area of improvement for us as a team. The whole organization, not us as a board, but the whole team. We just, there's nothing wrong with checking in with the folks that will be doing the work and seeing what they think they need. The other option is to adopt the calendar as is and then reassess later on and have a conversation about the whole days before school starts. We could make an adjustment. As long as we make an adjustment, we need to do it with enough notice so that families know when those whole days off would be in advance. So those are the three options for you. You can vote on a calendar today. You can just put a pause or pause it until the organizational meeting in March and we can get some data and feedback from staff. Or we can, we can move forward and then just continue this conversation as, as things evolve.
I don't think you want to do it twice. Do it now and maybe in the future.
Yeah, my, my
I'm very big on, on letting, letting the teachers have, you know, that morale wise, that's, that's got huge benefits.
Yes.
You know, too many times it's like, you know, the administration does this and they never hear from us. So I think there's a lot of benefit to doing that.
Thank you, Peter.
Is there a certain date we have to have something approved by?
I think the sooner the better. My biggest concern with this was getting us lined up with SST because of the busing issue. We've done that. I mean, we've got four parents on the board. Like, how soon would you want to know? That, that I think would be up to you because you start thinking about planning vacations and planning things like that, but there's no, you know, set date.
I think we don't meet again for a month. I'm correct.
Well, that's what I was going to say is that the next meeting is March 16th and that I think that, that we should come back with feedback from staff at that meeting and make a decision.
Yeah, I think, I mean, I think as a parent, if I knew March 16th, I think that that still gives me time to plan. So I think as long as we're, you know, planning that we'll make a vote, I think that is an acceptable time as a parent to accommodations.
I would agree. I'm comfortable waiting to get feedback from the teachers because they're the ones that are doing the front-facing work, the implementation, the accreditation, strategic planning. As a parent, it's been chaotic with the 24, so I like the once a month, but I do want to get more feedback from but I do want to get more feedback from the teachers.
Okay, thanks Heather.
Jamie.
So a few points I'd like to make. One is in the last meeting, I asked that we don't make a decision and that we get the feedback from parents. I appreciate those parents that provided feedback. That helped, as you can see, it actually adjusted the, the recommended calendar. I had asked Superintendent Ambrose previously, is it more effective or efficient to just, rather than have, I was basing this on the initial proposal, rather than having seven one-hour releases, can you just have no releases and have every seventh week a full day meeting to focus the full day meeting on just collaborating, not necessarily development, but collaborating and working on instruction? That would allow parents to not have to make arrangements seven times or I have to make arrangements once. People that end up having to take time off around it. I appreciate the feedback from the, the council. I'm still, I'll have to get back with you, Mr. Ambrose. I'm still a little confused because if we had seven one-hours that we're paying versus one day of seven hours, I'm not sure why that requires a renegotiation.
Yep.
The other aspect that I'd say that we want to be careful of, and I can see this happening because life works that way. So we asked parents for their input. We made adjustments for the prayer parental input and that seems to be something that most parents seem to be able to be okay with. Then after we go to the teachers and we say the teachers, what's your input? The teacher say, well, we're not quite sure what we want to do, but we don't want to do what those parents just identified.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
And, and then we somehow put an artificial issue between parents and teachers that didn't need to be there. So we just need to be, teachers have to understand there's a balance here too that we're trying to work on. So you just got to be very careful on that. I would agree with, with Heather that I thought the 24 was excessive. That was for COVID-related. I'm glad to see the new proposal, the, the final proposal. I like the best of the different proposals that we've talked about. And if, if, if that's from your perspective, the most effective way to manage it, that's okay with me. And just my mind was it'd be more effective to have a full day, but I, I can go with whatever you think is going to be more effective. But we do need to be careful on not setting up some type of a parent-teacher confrontation here that doesn't need to be there.
All right, and I, I agree. I, I think we need a little more input because I'm also really torn on like in one side, my parent brain is going, this is way too much and we need to make things more concise. And on the other side of my brain, I'm going, but I know the teachers have asked for, you know, PD and collaboration time. So I was trying to find that balance and I think that's what we're just trying to figure out now is hearing input from both sides and really trying to come together to collaboratively find where the balance is on everything. So I am all for pushing out to deciding at the next meeting.
Right, and, and we'll, I'll work with the administrators. Jim, Jim, stand up.
Yeah, I'm, I'm for holding off. If there's no urgent need to make a decision, I think we should get the input from families and staff. But I also think for myself, we've talked a lot about professional development. We've put extra money in the budget for professional development. But I don't, at this point, I'm not sure what topics are covered in professional development. I think it would be helpful and for me and maybe the rest of the board to have some kind of discussion or, or input on what is covered and what the goals are to, you know, be to being achieved and also for the community to understand.
Sure, sure. We're happy to put that up there.
All right, so you don't need a motion?
No, no, you just told us. Thank you.
Okay, all right, yearbook advertisement.
Yeah, I'm going to pull it up. So every year, the school board has been paying for an advertisement congratulating students in the, in their year of achievement. And then, so really this is a proposal to ask the school board for permission to put in a full-page advertisement and it's going to cost about $300.
And it will say the following, if everyone agrees, I mean, it's just a proposal. I had to give you something to think about, but we could always discuss this. The one that, that I struck me this year was when Thomas A. Edison said that many of life's failures are people who did not realize how close they were to success when they gave up. We hope our graduates never give up, achieve their goals and remember they will always be a part of the Sandborn family.
Beautiful.
Yeah, it's going to be tough to beat next year though.
Oh, I liked last year, so I had a hard time this year. I was digging.
Yeah, you did Stephen Covey last year.
Yeah, I did Stephen Covey last year. He's my favorite.
Yeah, and I was looking at Luke Skywalker for something.
Oh yeah, for sure.
You need a motion?
I think we need a motion. Motion to approve.
Second.
All right, any discussion? All right, all in favor?
Aye.
All right, unanimous. Thank you. Okay, policies for second read.
Think if someone would like to move the group, they may.
Yep.
I make a motion to move the group.
Thank you.
Second.
Okay.
All right, discussion?
I didn't have any further discussion.
Okay, just for clarification as to what exactly we're talking about. It's policies, EBCA, emergency plans, EEA, E A dash RDA, which is drugs and alcohol testing for school boss and commercial drivers, and FAA, which is annual facility plan. All right, there is no discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All right, unanimous, right. All right, COVID plan update.
So you, Chair Dutton had asked me to place this on the agenda in light of the last meeting. Just give you all an update. All, all schools are currently on mask recommended status and we are holding steady with our percentage of absences. The newly adopted plan from January is working very, very well. There's a definite correlation to the number of absences, to the number of active cases in the school. So we keep a close eye on it and we've watched the data now for how long, Dr. Haynes? Six weeks, eight weeks? Both six weeks and, and it is definitely correlated. And we recommend that we just leave the plan as it is, at least until April vacation, because we don't know if there's going to be another uptick. We feel like this is a much more transparent and easy-to-follow process. We've been very happy with it. It's by far, from my perspective, the best plan that we've had since we started this.
Need a motion on that?
No, just an update.
Jamie?
Yeah, I have a motion. I don't know if you want me to make a motion for discussion and then discuss it or just get my points and then go for the motion, which, which is.
I guess you could make the motion and then we can all sort of discuss.
So I would like to make a motion to have the Sandborn Regional School District campuses moved to a mask optional policy in replacement of the current plan. And if I can get a second, then I can go into my.
Second.
All right, so a lot of the people that spoke earlier kind of stole my thunder, but that's okay. I'm glad, I'm glad to hear people come and have their positions. They, they mentioned a lot of things. I would also mention that, you know, we get the updates from Exeter. They are, they are seeing significant and continued declines, the hospital. New Hampshire is number two, the second lowest in the country for hospitalization per capita for COVID cases. We are, we are virtually out of it, as was mentioned by Mr. Bashaw, in terms of many, many of the most restrictive states are all pulling their, their policies. We have seen all across the world, all kinds of states pulling back and we are coming out of the traditional flu season anyways, which is just tied into that in terms of where we've seen our spikes. I would say that the, the plan that we have has served us very well. I don't mean to denigrate the plan or say that this plan is a bad plan or it's not a good plan. My concern is I do not want to automatically come back into a everybody needs to mask up situation. Should something happen, as Mr. Ambrose alluded to, because we can't see the future, then I think that we, we can have a discussion to say, what do we need to do? This is an unexpected event. But I, I do think it's time for us to move back to what we had originally decided was that we're going to be mask optional for this year. And I would like to get us back to mask optional. And I hadn't really thought through all the different details, but the busing I would, I would say would be in part of that. It's part of the policy.
I don't know.
Sports also.
It, it can't be.
I'm not going to explain that. Yep.
Yeah, so the CDC issued an order that requires transportation companies such as our busing company to require masks while onboard. And that order is only effective until it's rescinded. Actually, when I, I heard the, the person speak about it, I went online and looked and, and it hasn't been rescinded as of about an hour ago.
So let me ask a question. So the CDC issues statements also saying everybody needs to be masked in school. We don't do that. Why do we have to do the, this with the buses?
Well, the bus, they can reach to the buses because it falls under the commerce clause of the US Constitution. They can't reach to the health and welfare of, of individuals within the state. That's the responsibility of the state.
Then I would say from my perspective, then I will have to do some research on that. I don't want to mess up what else I'm doing because trying to get something in that I can't do it. But I don't believe the CDC has the ability to order a damn thing. They're a, they're a consultative agency.
Can I, can I throw an opposite viewpoint on that as well? I think the school board, if they do decide to, to go in that direction, right now, the responsibility of making sure that masking of the students on the buses is the responsibility of the transportation company. And if students, if they get caught without enforcing that, then it's on their response. It's, they're responsible for it. If you decide tonight that you want to have mask optional on the bus, then we're responsible for it. So that's a choice that you would have to make.
And so until I get further information on that and understand it, I would say that the, the policy, the, the motion that I'm having when I say Sandborn Regional School District campuses move to make optional policy, the, the sports are happening on our campuses. It would include the sports, but it would not include buses at this point in time. That's not part of what's on our campus. But I, I'll do further research into that because it just, I'll do further research. Research into that.
Even though we have a contract with a busing company and we've got the contract, I don't think we have the right to tell the busing company that they can violate the law and whether they want to or expose themselves to possible litigation. So I, I would not even touch that. Jamie, as to your proposal, if you want to call it max optional or mask recommended, that's fine. But I would like to keep the system in place that we have. We have a school board meeting tonight, so Friday we get a tremendous spike in something. Well, if I am interpreting you correctly, we can change it, but we don't meet for another, well, till the 16th of March. But this gives Tom the ability to say, whoa, you know, over 10%, we better go to mask required. So giving him the freedom to make that decision instead of having come to the board and have us then have to change it back, I would suggest we keep it just as it is. I have family that asked me for copies because they wanted to bring it to their school board. We have a system where it's mask optional up to a point, mask recommended up to a point. And if it drops down, we go down. We don't have the luxury of being able to come in and say, well, gee, we have to readdress this now. So I, I would suggest we keep it just the way it is. It, it does everything that Mr. Bashaw talked about. Let's the parents decide. You want to call it optional instead of recommended? Okay, but I wouldn't, I wouldn't touch it right now because you could go a long time before, you know, you know, it's going to put Tom in a heck of a position when all of a sudden we're running 25. I don't think we will, okay? But you know, the way, one thing you've learned about me, rule number one, right? You cover your rear end first. All of a sudden, 25% of the kids come down with COVID or there's some kind of bump or something and he can't make the decision to say, we better go to masks. So I would, I would just stand pat right now.
I'm not sure who.
What, and, and I was on the school board when COVID first hit and I know that there were a lot of emergency meetings. If something really happened, I mean, I think if we go back to 10, 11%, I, I, I think part of the point is we don't need to panic at 10 or 11%. If something really happened, very significant, like 25, 30, whatever percent, that's really, I, I think it has to be something really significant. Is there a point of which we say we need to call an emergency meeting? I, I don't know what the rules are for calling an emergency meeting. I just, I don't want to see us go back to masks.
No, no, I'm not, I'm not saying that. No, the, the, the shouldn't would be up, up to the chair to say we need all meetings. But as I understand, there is now from zero to 10 is mask optional. Let the parents decide. If it goes over 10 to 20, I believe it is, then it's mask required based on evidence that we have at that time. All right, based on the number of kids that are sick. And then as it drops back down, I think it's at the 18, then it goes to max off because.
No, that.
I, I forget exactly what it would be, but when it starts sliding down, we go back to max optional. All I'm saying is if I interpret what Jamie said, it's, the board would decide, right? I'm saying the board's already decided. Let the superintendent say, oh my goodness, we just hit 15% and it's increasing. We better go to mask required. But, you know, whatever, I'm not going to be here. I'm just saying the system we've got seems to be working pretty well.
Given Pete's concern, which I think has some merit, every summer we give the superintendent the authority to make certain decisions without the board because the board's not here. So what I'm suggesting is we approve Jamie's policy, but give the superintendent or Jamie's motion, but give the superintendent the authority that in an emergency, he can revert back to the previous.
No, I don't want that.
I was going to say you're.
I don't want that.
Okay.
I don't either. Sorry, folks. You'll all be emailing me, Tom, you should be in masks. It's an emergency. We have six cases. Or the other way around. There's, it's just impossible.
Then I'm going to support the motion and if we need an emergency meeting, we have an emergency meeting.
That's fine, Jim.
I think it was Tammy and then.
So I, when we started the school year, I didn't, I was not under the impression that we said masks are optional no matter what. We said we were starting the school year with masks optional because we were in, you know, the COVID rate was in a good position and it wasn't at a, wasn't at a level where we felt that we needed to require masks. However, we left ourselves that option. And I, I amazingly, I'm going to agree with Pete. Probably for the, I don't know. Is that the first time?
For the last time?
First and last time I spoke, last in public anyway. I agree with Pete. I, I'm, I would rather have masks optional, but I don't think we should throw the baby out with the bath water and put ourselves in a, in a position where our administrators can't respond to, you know, in a flexible way.
Heather? I was going to say, I would like to keep the plan as is. We have February break coming. We have April break coming. As we know, last year we had spikes at those times. I would like to keep the plan at least until we get through to warmer weather.
Do you want to call it max optional instead of mask recommended? Doesn't matter to me. To me, it's the same thing.
The point that, yeah, that's, it's just semantics.
No, I agree.
So just I want to comment a couple of points. I agree with Superintendent Ambrose and disagree with Mr. Baker on that last point. This is a board decision. It's not the superintendent decision. The board has to be the ones that, that make the call. And, and I, I wouldn't be comfortable as Superintendent Ambrose is not.
You're not disagreeing with me? I agreed once Tom said he didn't want.
Yeah, well, even if he did, I wouldn't want him to have it because I, I, I think this is a, a board item. And this Mahoney's pointed out that we didn't, we didn't preclude ourselves from anything when we started the year as mask recommended. Well, it's true, we didn't, nor are we now. We're not precluding ourselves from anything. We're simply saying, and I think Ms. Bashaw said that, nothing's going to happen automatically of remasking the kids. There's not just going to be the threshold. To, to Mr. Broderick's point about this is an excellent plan, I agree with that statement. I do think it's an excellent plan. At some point in time, we heard about the graduation. This is back to normal. We're back to normal. We, we need to get back to normal. So I, I, I urge approval of the motion.
Oh, well, if you were, I was going to second your motion or.
I think we already have. Yeah, we already have a second.
So I, I, I just need to go on record formally as saying that I, I don't agree with this motion just because I want it on the record. Sure. And if the board chooses to make it mask recommended, if something goes awry, we'll have that conversation. I do not believe that this is the time to do this. The plan is working. The plan is working fantastically. Did I make that up? It's working very well. It's working great. It, it, until we, I'm worried about the vacations, February break in particular. It's in two weeks. There will be a spike after February break. We get to April, I'm a little less worried about April vacation because people will be outdoors and doing things. And we can open the buildings and the windows are open. The windows are not open yet in the schools. Air is not flowing through the schools. That's my concern. I, I'm not saying that there's going to be a problem. Um, I thought that the discussion tonight, I'm a little surprised by this because I thought that the discussion tonight would be um, about maybe increasing the percentage before it kicks back in. Saying, okay, you know, we, we, we're at 10% right now before it kicks in and it takes three days in a row of 10%. So you have to be at 10% absences three days in a row before you move to mask recommended. Maybe you make that 12%, right? Or 13% if you want to, you could, there's, I'm just trying to say there's a middle ground between no plan and, and a plan that has a little bit wider threshold. Um, so I, I just, I need to, I'm, I'm sorry to do this and you may vote against my recommendation, but I have to make my recommendation, which is that the plan is sound. And that supports the staff and the administration. So that's where I'm at.
Move the motion.
Uh, well, I'm just gonna add my two cents. Um, so I can't believe I'm saying it. But I do, I mean, I, I agree with Jamie and Maura and, you know, the people that stood up here. I mean, at some point we have to get back to normalcy. The reality is the CDC has come out and said that the masks that the kids are wearing aren't effective. They don't do anything. So even by saying that we're mask required, they're really not effective. It does keep kids from sticking their fingers in their mouth and up their nose. And it reminds them to kind of like, oop, right, I gotta stay away. You gotta have personal space, but the mask itself really is not effective at stopping the spread. So I, I don't, I, I agree. So we will now take a vote. Uh, all in favor? All right. For all opposed? All right. Motion carries. All right. Uh, second public comment. All right. Uh, other business. Next meeting agenda. Uh, next Sanborn Regional School Board meeting will be held on Wednesday, March 16th, 2022 at 6:00 PM in the library at the Sanborn Regional High School. The second voting session of the annual school district meeting will be held on Tuesday, March 8th, 2022 from 8:00 AM to 8:00 PM in the Swayze Gymnasium on the Seminary Campus for Kingston and at 8D Merrimack Road, the fire rescue station for Newton voters. Uh, and now we will move into non-public, Mr. Broderick. We do.
I did, Pete, I did.
One last time.
One more time into the. Okay, Madam Chairman, make a motion to go with the non-public based on RSA 91 dash A colon 32 C and K.
All right. Uh, great. All right.
Somebody seconded.
Second.
Yeah, Tammy did. So roll call vote. Pete?
Aye.
Heather?
Aye.
Jamie?
Aye.
Tammy?
Yes.
Yes.
Myself. Yes. Maura? Yes. All right.